Okay, we'll have a moment of silent reflection and pledge to the flag. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I call this meeting of the Montague County Commission to order. Let the record reflect that all three commissioners are present. First item on the agenda is election of president for calendar year 2022 in accordance with West Virginia State Code 7-1-1. I would like to, as normally the president doesn't motion, but I've asked Commissioner Arnett if I can go ahead and make the motion to nominate Commissioner Bloom as president for 2022.
Second.
We have a second. Discussion, as we are aware, this position doesn't give any commissioner any more power than any other commissioner. I'd actually argue that it gives you less power because it's the president's job to preside over the meeting and not make motions, so that's why I ask Commissioner Arnett if it's okay if I made it for, have the privilege of making that rare motion serving for this, this action. Also, as you're aware, I'm serving, I'm serving in this fifth year rather than my sixth year to fulfill a campaign promise that I made to myself in 2016 that I'll always focus on the county's business and first and foremost and not serve as the role of president while running for reelection. The commission should be focused on citizens' issues and not the personal ambitions of any one commissioner. In our elected positions, you no longer speak for yourself in your position. No matter how hard we try, we speak for and are representing the commission at all stages. That's unfair, but perception is reality and the fact is really applicable to the president. The citizens of Montague County should know that this commission functions so efficiently because we respect where we agree and where we disagree. That respect is simply, is not simply a portion, but rather is earned. And Commissioner Bloom has certainly earned my respect and admiration for his hard work and I have no reservations with him serving as president of this body. I am, I am beginning my sixth year on commission and this is my third time nominating Tom as president. He stepped up to the task in those two years and I have no doubt that he will represent us well in 2022. Sorry, I need a drink. So having said that, Jeff, would you like to say anything?
Just to echo what you said, I know no public servant that works any harder than Tom and I'm sure that he will do a wonderful job representing us as you have. We thank you for your stewardness this last year and really helping me along in my first year and thank you for serving as president and I look forward to Tom's leadership in the coming year.
Okay, so we have a first and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Well, I assume you accept the position there, Jeff.
Thank you.
Shot of the passing of the gavel there.
And all my junk there.
Yeah, we've already pre-populated some of Tom's junk.
Yes, I know.
And Sean, as per your prior request, I'll be glad to switch stations with you once we get the computer flipped around.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. First, I just want to say thank you very much to my county commissioners and I'm excited to continue the work that the commission has accomplished under the leadership of President Sean Secora. And this is going to be a very eventful and exciting year for the county citizens and for the county commission. And I do also agree with Sean, it is very hard and it's very difficult for me because they know I like to speak up. When you're president, you have to wait till the end and that is a big challenge for the year, so I look forward to it. At this time, we will have the rules and procedures for the management of regular meetings of Montague County Commission. Is there any discussion on that?
Well, I would move to approve the rules as presented.
Second.
Proper move and second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It passes, thank you. Consent and approval, our county administrator?
Well, first I'd like to read, since we did not have a meeting last Wednesday, Commissioner Bloom did come in and make himself available to review the vouchers so that bills would continue to get paid. So the vouchers for December 29th, 2021, General County, $47,567.67. Camp Muffley, $4,003.72. Recreation levy, $15,850. Purchasing card vouchers, General County, $1,0561.61. Camp Muffley, $420.27 in Mason Dixon Park, $200.77 for a voucher total of $69,972.36. So that's all that we had for last week.
Move to approve the voucher, the vouchers presented for last week.
Second.
Proper move and second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we will.
Now for this week, January 5th, exonerations, we have 10 for $3,117.52. Minutes for December 22nd, 2021, vouchers, General County Fund, $246,844.12. General School, $272,559.24. Magistrate Court, 3935-911, $13,671.75. Chestnut Ridge Park, $1,006.96.25. Camp Muffley, $1,006.20.71. Mason Dixon Park, $259.40. Assessor's valuation, $2,017.267. Purchasing card vouchers, General County, $12,991.97. 911, $167.64. Chestnut Ridge Park, $171.15. Camp Muffley, $13,370.65. For a voucher total of $565,564.90. We have position vacancies for boards and authorities listed on our website. We have fiduciary orders for January 5th, 2022. And itemized statement of services for fiduciary commissioner George Armstead.
Okay, I would move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Proper move and second, any discussion? Seeing none, I call for the vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any against? Okay, passes announced. Okay, fiduciary orders.
Yes, sorry.
Yes.
So you have an objection to the will filed in the Billy Wayne Jones estate.
Commissioner Arnett, did you, were you, did you have a chance to take a look at that?
I did. I reviewed it and while I have some specific concerns about the individual accounting, that's not really our, our, our position to, to object to that. But I think based upon the objections that were made, I think it'd be proper to refer the matter to a fiduciary commissioner.
A quick question though, because I noted and again, I'm not, I'm not a lawyer, but the, they were contesting the will.
Oh, I thought it was a, I'm sorry, I missed that.
They're the Billy Wayne one, they're contesting the will and that was a note from the county clerk that those will contests go through Circuit Court.
Right, they have one year from the date of death and it has to be objected in with an action in Circuit Court. That's not something under our purview.
So would we just defer our decision until the Circuit Court take that up?
Yeah, in, in, in light of those facts, yes, I would agree to that.
Okay, so.
So you want to just?
I'll make that, yeah, make that motion then to defer our decision on that until they've had adequate time to object to the.
Go through the Circuit Court.
Yeah, because there was also an objection to the accounting, but I missed that there was an objection to the will.
Well, thanks, the county clerk had noted in there, so I, again, I just wanted to point that out, so I'll second that.
Okay, proper move and second to defer, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We also have the.
An objection to the settlement filed in the Barbara J. Campbell estate.
Yes.
Let me pull that real quick.
That one's kind of, that one kind of looks like a mess.
It does.
Yes, as I was hoping we could defer that one, well, is that one?
That, that's the one I think.
That's the one that you were, yeah.
The fiduciary department asked that you put a 30 or 60 day expiration on that to get that hearing held just so it doesn't end up on the administrative closure list.
I would move that we refer to case to a fiduciary commissioner with a 45 day deadline for the objection to deliver their, for the objector to deliver the required deposit for the hearing to the fiduciary department. And if the fiduciary department does not receive the required deposit by its due date, the current settlement may proceed.
Second.
Okay, so it's moved to the fiduciary department within 45 day response. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, yes, that was interesting. Okay, do you have any others?
I think what got it mixed up is they were presented in opposite order that they were here, so I think that's why.
Okay, introduction of new employees.
We just have one. Seth Hubbard has been hired at Chestnut Ridge Park for the, a part-time maintenance person.
Do you have a motion to?
Need to approve.
Second?
Proper move and second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. At this time, you will have comments from the public. Is there any individual who'd like to come before us and speak to us?
Dr. Smith will speak during the elected officials.
Okay, that's what, yeah, that was, okay. Okay, seeing none, we will move on. Ms. Colleen Coon with grants and we are still not needing, there's no grants at this time. Okay. Correspondence, county commission, 2021 year and report. Okay, go ahead.
Ms. Shaun?
Well, Sean, you want to, since it was your year, did you want to discuss that or go read the report?
Actually, Renata, would you mind?
No, I don't mind.
Okay.
Okay. Under highlights.
Yes.
We've changed the format the last, this is the second year that we've used this format, so a little bit more concise. Highlights, Commissioner Secora was elected president, prepared and approved the fiscal year 22 budget of $39,292.159. That budget represents 3.8 increase over fiscal year 21. Decreased the county levy rate by 2.2%. Funded multiple contingency accounts, general county, fully funded, legal, financial stabilization, et cetera. Received half of $20 million American Recovery Plan Act funding from the U.S. Treasury. Placed funds aside for broadband planning, new Mecca 911 building. Other countywide capital improvements, employee pay raises, increases in group health insurance costs. Approved additional bond issuances for the University Town Center property and sales tax increment financing districts for expansion of the development. Approved additional bond issuances for the Mon County Redevelopment District Number Two, Morgantown Industrial Park for expansion of the development. In order, order to approve and create a new tax increment financing district to be known as District Number Five, Harmony Grove. Ongoing improvements to county parks, creation of new positions for the director of parks and venue manager for the Mon County Center. Catherine's Knob Tower replacement project is ongoing. Establishment of the Mon County Tourism Advancement Fund in coordination with Visit Mountaineer Country C V B. Approved memorandum of agreement to form the Montague County Morgantown Area Geospatial Information Consortium. Approved changes to the magistrateal district boundary lines, settle dispute with the West Virginia Supreme Court over family court rent. Approved bond issuance for the Mon County Development District Number Five, Harmony Grove. Supplemental funding that was approved through the year for the, for Morgantown Utility Board Hazardous, Household Hazardous Waste Collection Day. The Health Department, one-time non-base building supplemental pay, Smile Express Program, vehicle maintenance program assistance. Mountaineer Regional Sobering Center. Triune-Hallack Community Center, Mylan Park Foundation. Initiation of Mon County Mini Swimmers Program at the Aquatic Center and Track Complex at Mylan Park. Stewartstown Community Council, parking area and interior building upgrades. The Mon County Extension Services and 4-H Center. Community Food Innovation Center, equipment and installation. Mylan Puskar Health Right, relocating and programming. United Way for Cold Shelter. The J.C.'s Alumni and Friends and the Mon Wireless Ham Radio Club 2021 Christmas Parade. Town of Granville, Traffic Controlled Devices at University Town Center. Scotts Run Museum and Trail, Scotts Run Street Fair. And the West Virginia Black Bears Dynamic Baseball Events Tournament. Ongoing initiatives, COVID-19 pandemic response, continued cooperation with other governmental bodies. Countywide broadband initiative, expansion of the TIF districts, continuing extension building improvement enhancements. Improvements to county parks, multiple county facilities, capital improvements and initiation of development of long-range plan, orphan road grant process and development of land use and subdivision regulations.
Anyone like to have any discussion on any of these?
Yeah, I, we always go through this every year and this is, it's fun to look back at the previous year. I like putting these in terms of like my top 10 and I like to, as. As they were read, I like to kind of go through my top 10. One, number 10 was the Mylan closure, our response, though that was a negative event that impacted our community. I'm very proud of the way that we proactively tried to, tried to get involved and we're still working that issue and we're still working to lessen the effect. Our overall economic development projects that were going on in this county will help to lessen that effect. Number nine, extension building, hiring a venue manager to assure access by the public and nonprofit groups and the opening of the Community Food Innovation Center. Number eight was the C V B funding to kickstart events in Mon County, very proud of our participation in that. Number seven, continuing improvement in employee benefits. We continue to ensure that we're making our, the overall package for our employees here at the county competitive and I'd say they are. We've kept down, we've, in my six years, now, now six years, we've never raised the rates for healthcare costs and we've continuously given, given raises, so we've managed the finances of the county such that we could do that. Another thing, and I'm glad Dr. Smith's here, though we, we were involved at the beginning, but this is a continuing project, is to give the kids a smile program. That's probably the, one of the biggest things I'm proud of being part of and being able to participate in. When you give a kid a smile at that age, you change the trajectory of his whole life, her, his or her whole life. So I'm glad that we had a small part in setting that up and I'm certainly glad that the Health Department is growing that program. Number five, the Harmony Grove TIF, TIF and participation to make sure that the, the project is successful and the interchange happens. Number four, budget levy rate approval, thorough and transparent management of the county finances. Number three, orphan road program. Number two, whom personally have very, very heavy stake with is our collaboration. I'm sorry, I got my numbers mixed up for the orphan road program, I think was two and then broadband was two. And then overall, I think the collaboration that we've had over the past year and over the past years with all the different municipalities around us. Examples are collaboration with Granville, working on the traffic light, we worked through that with our developer. Morgantown, we have the sobering center, we have health rate funding, we have the M Magic Program. Overall, general communication. Board of Education, Tom, your work with the Mini Swimmers Program to make that happen. Westover, I mean, we're tirelessly working on getting the interchange to occur, which is going to significantly benefit Westover. And we, we had a small part in trying to help with their flood response. Star City, we've done some work with the TIF, with their TIF district. Green County, not even in, not even in West Virginia, our neighbors to the, to the north. We've had a lot of interaction with them. The Health Department and W Hospital, standing up the Sears Center, bringing those organizations together to, to do that. And then our county parks improvement, so the overall collaboration is really kind of my number one on the list. And then one that's not mentioned, it's kind of an honorable mention, but it was a really cool, cool highlight of our whole year is when Emma Solers came to visit us to tell us about her historical markers project. I thought that was pretty neat and she's a very impressive young lady and it, it stood out to me across, as I look across the year. So sorry to take up so much time, but I like to try to quantify the things that we've done in the last week and the last year also, so.
Just to add to what Commissioner Secora said, of course, the Harmony Grove, to me, is, is project number one that, for what that will mean to the community and economic development. I look forward to continuing our work toward that. Septic expansion at Exit 155. You know, water and septic expansion is a huge project we have going forward. And the Ascend West Virginia Program that we were working with, I think that's imperative. The folks that are coming here and high-quality families coming here and living and working and remotely, wonderful program. And I'm most excited for the next few months of opening our new pool at Camp Muffley. It's going to be, it's pretty fantastic. If you haven't seen it yet, of course, it's covered now, but it's going to be a great, great improvement to that park. So other than, I just echo everything else you said and those are the other ones I wanted to touch on.
And I'll just add, I'd like to put them all into one category. Usually everyone thinks county commission, economic development, economic development. But because of that, I call what we've done for the quality of life for Montague County citizens. Whether it be the Mon County Mini Swimmers, like you mentioned, the Cold Shelter, the Sobering Center, Ramada Inn, Ascend Park. It's the quality of life that we are offering and continue to grow and we continue to be competitive nationwide. And I think that's what I'm most excited, the three of us have been able to do and I want to continually say that we're very proactive and not sitting back. So I agree with you. Since it's just a report, we just put it in the record, we do not have to accept it, do we? Okay, okay, moving along. Letter, thanks from the Mon County Board of Health.
Sam Chico, this is regarding the supplemental funding of the $100,000 to aid in their employees.
We're very fortunate to be able to do. Letter from Mon, Monongahela Conservation District regarding the district's annual awards and appreciation banquet.
That is January 13th at 6 o'clock at the Mason Town Fire Hall.
Okay, and also we want to put notice for the USDA Rural Development regarding sale of a foreclosed commercial property.
It's located at 1377 Chaplain Road. The sale will be held on January 10th at 1:00 p.m. at the court, on the courthouse steps.
Do either of the commissioners have any other correspondence?
No.
No.
Okay.
About the, there's one more on the USDA.
Next page. At least on the screen.
That was it, that was it.
Oh, the foreclosed property.
Yeah, it was the foreclosed one.
Oh, I, I'm sorry, I did have one thing I wanted to relay. Jimmy Smith had sent, I don't know what happened to it, but he sent a winter weather advisory. So just wanted to let people know, obviously everybody's paying attention, but there is a winter weather advisory for the next couple of days and we don't want to be unprepared like they were in Virginia over the past couple of days, so I wanted to just pass that along.
I thought the best one was a mistake by one of the TV stations that had potential snow, 1 to 72 inches. I don't think they meant the same. I thought that was pretty good, so everyone's prepared. Okay. I'm finished business.
None.
None, okay. New business, to consider for approval, the 2022 holiday schedule. Do I have a motion?
Pretty self-explanatory.
Yes.
Move to approve?
Second.
And the proper move and second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now the fun. Consideration of setting scheduled dates for the 2022 Board of Review and Equalization.
Move to approve?
Second.
Okay, did you want to read those dates?
I can.
Yes.
You're required to meet on February 1st to open, then you have to meet every third day, so that we've got the first, February 4th, February 9th, 14th, 17th, and you'll close as your signing die on the 22nd.
Okay.
So we'll post that, it'll go in the paper, so on and so forth.
Okay, so if we move to second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It passes. Consideration to approve a funding request by Mylan Park Foundation, Inc. for Mylan Park entrance wayfinding signage.
Move to approve?
Second.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry, move to approve the funding request of $10,000, wanted to clarify what it was.
Second.
Did you want to just discuss what that is?
Yeah, this is to accommodate and prove the wayfinding to direct individuals to the Mon County Center and to the current and future entities utilizing our facility, so we're just paying our part of the overall Mylan Park wayfinding effort.
Okay. Any other? We have a first and second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes, any other new business?
No, sir.
Seeing none, we will go to reports from elected officials and it's good news, bad news. We are glad you were here.
As usual.
We appreciate what you're about to say and I know everyone is really tired. I thought, I have to give the governor credit, he was correct. Everyone is becoming numb and we can't become numb, so I'll turn it over to you.
Well, thanks and congratulations on your new presidency. And I want to take just a, the moment to thank the county commission for their support, not just the financial, which is obviously a huge piece of the puzzle for us, but the support and throughout the, my last seven years here, we, we've had ups and downs and we have agreed and agreed to disagree. But I think it's always been collegial and professional and respectful and I think that that says a lot about how we as an organization and a county can, can assist the overall quality of living here. So, so I appreciate all that you all do for us. I want to take a moment also and, and mention that as I had stated throughout a couple of our board meetings throughout the year, as we have grown from 67 people, full-time employees, to, you know, sometimes 120, above 100, being both the administrator and the health officer has become extremely difficult. And with that, I have stepped back as the administrator and we have a very capable young man, Anthony De Felice, who is here. I wanted to make sure that you all knew him and could put a face and a name and, because he may be here from time to time to give reports as well and I want to make sure you have a really good relationship with, with him. This will allow me to focus on clinical issues 100% of my time and to work on grants and that kind of stuff. So it's, it's, it's like you say, it's a good and a bad, there, there, you know, we've grown to the point that, you know, we have to make some changes internally as well. And with that, I wanted to go over some, some figures. Do you want me to click or do you have? Click away. Okay, unfortunately, and you guys have a paper copy.
I've got it up on the screen.
Ben, I'll just give you a copy when we're done here, if that's okay. And so you all have seen this, this graph before and unfortunately, this spike is, is shooting through the roof. Now, there are, there are a couple of points on here. If you look at this big widespread, there's a notch that we have in here, that's Thanksgiving. And then you go up and then there's another notch and that's Christmas, New Year's. And it's a little artificial because it's not that we stopped having positive cases, it's stopped, people stopped testing and therefore these figures are based on the number of positive. And we saw the same thing over here on the, on the far right-hand side, you see another dip, which again is Thanksgiving and another little slowdown here at Christmas and New Year's. So we're seeing the same pattern. Unfortunately, the last year, when we spent 113 days in the red, which I, just to review, is above 25, 100,000 cases on a weekly average, we're now 140 days into, into this spike. And so there's good and bad, we're learning to live with it, but, but I fear, as Commissioner Bloom mentioned, that as the governor has stated, people are getting numb to the fact, we're, we're COVID exhausted. And unfortunately, that's when people let their guard down and we worry about the, the results. Next slide, please. I apologize for this busy slide, but I want you to look on the left-hand side of the dates, starting at the 28th of December and going through the 3rd of this week. And then we have it broken down into all age categories. And if you look at the top and then glance to the bottom, you will see that the zero to five-year-olds went from 46 to 81. The six to 17, 21 to 85. 54 to 97. The 25 to 34 taking the biggest hit, 94 to 197. The next, 35, 44. The significance of that is these are your workforce. And most of the people that are doing projections on this are saying that you should make yourself aware that you're probably going to have anywhere up to 30% absenteeism because a lot of people are going to get sick. New York City this week announced that they had 20% call-offs in their law enforcement and 30% call-offs in EMS. So we will not be any different from that, we will see a lot. And so these numbers unfortunately continue to go up and it's really across the board. So no one group is. really across the board. So no one group is, is getting spared. And unfortunately, the heart of the workforce is getting the most out of it. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. So on, on the good news is that we have received funding from, from the CDC, which is the Enhanced Laboratory Capacity, ELC, grant. But we also have some funding through HERSA, which is the Health Resources and Service Administration. And we're also working with Johns Hopkins to try to get messaging out to people to get those who are vaccine reluctant to come in and get vaccinated. And so at the bottom, you can see the bar. The green is the, the numbers that we have at least one vaccine. The blue is fully vaccinated, and the yellow are those with a booster. And it has those five counties there, which we are working in all of them. And so we're, we're pretty pleased that the numbers are going up. Next slide, please. And again, I apologize for this very, very busy, but in each county, and I'll just draw your attention to Mon County, we're looking at June of 2021 and comparing that to January 2022. And people with one dose, blacks, 33, those people who identify themselves as black, okay, and it's 33.6, went to 57.9.
That's okay.
I am hugely satisfied with that. We can do better, but that's because of our efforts in trying to get targeted vaccines out and trying to get messaging out. Other is a huge category of people that do not want to identify as one race or the other. Okay, be that as it may. Still, the numbers are 35 to 56, and whites 42 to 58. That's one dose. You can see the ones who are fully vaccinated and those who have received a booster. And it's not applicable in June because they weren't available until after September. And so we're at 20% for whites, 12 and a half for, for blacks, and 12.4 for others. And you can see how it plays out in the other counties. And so again, this is just sort of some evidence of the us beating the bush and having different vaccine clinics and doing the homebound. And I want to give a shout out to Dr. Jerry Carr and the NAACP for helping set up some of the vaccinations for the undocumented people in our community. And, because, you know, they get sick, and they can spread it as well. So being able to, to get those folks vaccinated, we think is, is a really important part of our work. Next slide, please. So now we're going to get into some confusing stuff. And so I, I put it in writing so that you two can see what we're up against. On the 28th, the CDC put out some, some guidance for people with COVID. And so they've updated their isolation quarantine. I want, I want to just make sure that we're all clear, that they put this out as a press release, which is kind of unprecedented. Usually, they put out an interim guidance or recommendation and then have the full. That's the way the typical governmental type of things get issued. This came out as a, the press release, I'm assuming that they did that to kind of stick their toe in the water and test and see what's going on. But they have changed a few things. And the, the thing that we need to remind ourselves of, that this does not apply to healthcare personnel. Okay? And does not supersede any state, local, or tribal, or territorial laws, rules, regulations, and then the media station. Next slide, please. So the key points. For children and adults that are symptomatic. Now, I had, I underlined that because as this has morphed, symptoms can be a scratchy throat. The original COVID that we were aware of when it was alpha, fever, fatigue, malaise, all of that stuff. And now it can be just, I feel a little rough, or I'm not up to par, and I got a scratchy throat. So basing thing on symptoms and having the public base things on symptoms, I think is, is a difficult position. Anyway, it says that for those who test positive, then they're still saying 10 days after symptoms or after resolution of fever for at least 24 hours improvement of other symptoms. Again, that improvement of other symptoms is difficult because you didn't know it going in. How do you know it going out? But then for people who are severely ill, and we're aware of some of these individuals who just haven't gotten better in their 10-day or their 14-day period. And, you know, we're particularly concerned about them, and we know that the hospitalizations are going up. Looking at the numbers of our two county hospitals, there are about 10 to 14 people being admitted per day. We're not busting, you know, the roof off. It's not, you know, stressing ICU. But as we move through this, if, you know, EMS is, is taxed for personnel, hospitals are taxed for personnel, this could become sort of problematic. And then for people who are infected but asymptomatic, meaning they never develop symptoms, isolation can be discontinued after 10 days after a positive test. And then patients who have recovered can usually be detecting RNA in their noses for up to three months. So we stop it at 10 days. The isolation part, if you test positive, you got 10 days. And if you do nothing, at the end of 10 days, as far as I'm concerned, you're free to walk about the country. 10 days is the isolation period. It's never changed. And I think consistency in these times is really important, because otherwise, this stuff gets really confusing to people. Now, next slide, please. I just want to take a breath here and just state that the mitigation strategies that we have put in place here in Mon County haven't always been popular. We get pushback from, from this one and that one, and particularly where sports are concerned, and sometimes parents. But our job, and what we take an oath to do, is to protect the public, prevent disease, and promote the public health. And if, I just ranked the top eight counties in terms of the number of deaths that they have. And so Canaan County is leading the pack with 576 deaths. This information is two days old. And so they've had a total of 30,000 cases of COVID. And if you take the total number of COVID cases divided by population, they have an incidence of 16 or 17%, if you want to sort of paint it for a brush. And then if you get COVID, your risk of dying is close to 2%. Okay? You follow me through that? And then the vaccine rates that I got from the New York Times, because we don't keep that statistic on the, on the data site. So Cabell, a county that has a smaller population than we do of 9,400, they have a close to 20% incident rate. They've lost 303 people with a 58% vaccine. If you drop down, Montague County, we have 158. Now, there are counties that have less of a death rate than we do, but relatively speaking with our population, our numbers, I will hold up against any county in West Virginia. And so we've had a total of 16,000 cases, which is less than Mercer County, but they have 19% of their population infected. Harrison County, 33.9% infection rate. Every third person you meet on the street in Harrison County is affected with, or has had, because these numbers are total. Okay? And so I hear a lot of people say, well, there's a difference between antibodies that you get from vaccine and naturally. I don't buy that argument for a couple of reasons. The easiest one to understand is that we know that there are people who've had it three times. Well, where's this natural antibody helping these people? Because they've had it two other times. They should have enough antibody in them. What we understand is that whether it's antibody from a vaccine injection or antibody that's acquired from survival of COVID infection are temporary. And I read something this morning that said that the vaccine booster probably only gives you 10 weeks of protection. If you've had two vaccines, you have 37% protection. That's kind of take, take your odds there. But if you have a booster, you're up to 73%. But again, it fades with time. And I think all of them fade with time. It's just like getting influenza. You get a booster the following year because your immune system weakens over time, but then this thing's morphing over time. So it comes back and challenges you with a different kind of pattern. Next slide, please. So that now we're up to the press release. And this is where, so I wanted to explain, these are the things that we have done, and I'm particularly proud of the results that we have got. Now, we're placed in a position that the CDC is saying, if you test positive, we're changing the rules. Isolation, now remember, the other one was on the 28th. This one, the day before, they're saying that isolation, you just have to stay home for five days. Well, I think that, again, in order to understand this, traditionally, isolation has been 10 days. And Dr. Walensky from the CDC admitted on a press conference that the reason the CDC put this out is they were projecting that there's going to be so many people affected with this sixth wave of COVID. There are going to be so many businesses struggling that they felt compelled to try to keep people in the workforce. I can understand why they would think that way. But you stay at home for five days, and then you can return to work if, and people seem to forget this part. They just think, all they hear is five days, and then, you know, if you have no symptoms. Again, the symptom thing's a little challenging in my mind. Or if your symptoms are resolving, then you can leave your house. You have to continue to wear a mask around others for five days. So it's still a 10-day, five days at home, five days with a mask. And if you have a fever, you got to continue to stay home. Because here's the, here's the issue. If you told me that you had COVID, I'd say, okay, welcome to the club. A lot of people have it. Hope you feel better in a couple of days. Go home. Take care of yourself. If at five days, you want to come back to work, I think that's really an employer decision. It's not going to be our recommendation. But if your employer says, yes, we're so strapped for a workforce, come back, but wear a mask, I'm okay with that, but I won't sit beside you. If you tell me that you took a test on day six and it was positive, I think you're still positive. If you, and again, if you wait till 10, day 10, I don't need anything else. Your, your infectious period should be done. So we're still dealing with this 10-day period. We're just slicing the salami in a different manner. Okay? Now, the other problem is that in the quarantine. So if you were exposed, now we have if this went, then what? Traditionally, it's been 14 days. And I will say that our recommendation for people in these closed situations, especially public schools, our recommendation is going to be 10 days isolation and 14 days quarantine. Because you've got kids together, and I'm trying to take the long view, how do we keep schools open? How do we keep kids able to go? How do we keep the burden from shifting to their parents to be off all this time? So I think that we need to not change horses in the middle of this tsunami. And if it was, it'd be different if our numbers were going the other way. You know, if someone told me that we were flattening the curve, it's just the axis is wrong.
Just so you look at.
So, so now, there's an asterisk, if you are fully vaccinated, but the CDC changed the definition of fully vaccinated. It just really didn't go into it. So fully vaccinated means you have two vaccines and a booster. So if you only have two vaccines, you're not considered fully vaccinated, and you get to carpool with the unvaccinated. So again, there's a lot of nuance to these rules that I think make a lot of opportunity for confusion. So if you're fully vaccinated, you get to wear a mask around others for 10 days. And that really hasn't much changed. If you're vaccinated and you get exposed, you never did have to go into quarantine because you had protection. We're assuming that there's some level of protection. Now, they're admitting that, well, it wears off, so just wear a mask for 10 days. And I'm, and I'm good with that. And then test on day five if possible. Now, here's another rub. We have ramped up our testing, and we're now testing four days a week at, at, at the rec center. WBU thankfully has stepped up as well with us. And then on Wednesdays, we do. And I have, I have the calendar for that.
Thank you.
The issue is, is that how do you get tested on day five or six or what have you? Or the school has adopted, the Board of Education, I should say, has adopted the test to stay. And that's another CDC set of recommendations. And I think that they're very reasonable. But again, we're now dealing with those who are not vaccinated. So if you're exposed, you're not vaccinated, you get tested on day one, day three, day five, day seven, and nine. Well, that's all good in theory, but I'm not sure how people are going to get that done. And the Play at Home edition hasn't really been readily available. I know that WBU is giving out some of those to, to their students and hope that they test. The other part of that is that if you're doing it at home, how do we know? So now we're dependent upon the citizens of this county to take the initiative to call us and hopefully not get a busy signal and be persistent and let us know the results. So our opportunity to know the disease burden is going to become a lot less. And so, again, fully vaccinated, if you've had both vaccines and a booster, or you've had two shots within the last six months, because they think that your immunity is still up within six months, or if you have done the Johnson, Johnson, Jensen vaccine within the last two months. Again, so now we've got all of these different categories, and again, it's confusing with people. Next slide, please. So if you're not fully vaccinated, then again, it's stay at home, five days, wear a mask around others for an additional five days. And then they throw in if you can't quarantine. Now, we're leaving it up to the individual to decide if they're what we used to call essential personnel. So I, I'm disappointed in the lack of clarity in this. I understand what they're trying to achieve. I understand the complexity of it. But this is like a bowl of spaghetti. It is hard to follow one strand all the way through. Next slide, please. So just to add to this, if you are 12 years old and up and you've got two shots of Pfizer, then you, they've been lowered from six months to five months, you can get your, your booster. If you're 12 years old, up, and immunocompromised, you only have to wait 28 days. If you're 12 years old and you're up, and you've only seen the first shot of Pfizer, then you have to wait 21 days. And then pediatric Pfizer, if you've got both shots, there's nothing, there's no booster at this point in time. Five to 11, immunocompromised, 28 days, five to 11, then you've only got the first shot, 21 days. Next slide, please. Sorry to bore you with this, but I'm just trying to demonstrate how difficult this is for people who work in the healthcare industry. And I've spent a lot of time trying to make this understandable. And this is just, my darn, I'm not going to bore you with that. And then Johnson, Johnson, Jensen. Go ahead, please. I thought I had the slide on it. So the, the last slide is the calendar.
Right.
And, and I didn't have it on the thing that I, that I mailed out. But I just want to reiterate that the other thing that we're kind of confused on, because the State Board of Education doesn't have any rules on it. They do have rules for influenza. It's my understanding, I haven't seen the language, but I'm told that if a school has 10% influenza, then, then that's the, the trigger. But we're expecting maybe 30%, and there's no closure, there's no trigger with that. So we're, we're waiting for, you know, the state to, the DHHR, Bureau of Public Health, and the Board of Education to maybe give us some instruction on that. I can tell you what I would do. I will say this, right now, every nursing home in Montague County has an outbreak. Every single nursing home and the majority of daycare centers. So that, I can't hit that point hard enough, that the numbers are going through the roof. The other thing that I think is important to bring up is that it still takes about a week, five to seven days, to get the genomic testing done. And that's being done at WBU in the RDL Research Development Laboratory. But you're, you're always at least a week behind. And so people are already half, you know, three quarters of the way through that isolation period before you understand. three-quarters of the way through that isolation period before you understand. So it's hard to get the lid on that. We are told by the state that we are still seeing the tail end of Delta, that the majority of cases that we're seeing in Montague County, we've only been told we have 35 cases. Now next week, I don't know how many we actually had today, but I'm a week behind, right? So if the majority of cases are still Delta, and we only have, you know, 35 that are their Omicron, then, you know, it's still a bad moon rising, you know, we've got, you know, bigger things that are going to come. So we internally have looked at who can work from home. Obviously, nursing cannot. Some of the things that we do in threat prep, people on the front lines with vaccinations and swabbing, we need those people in there, but some of the others. So that would be my advice to any entity that has employees, is try to figure out who can work from home. Because this is going to continue to come. And while the argument is that, well, it's going to be mild, and it's going to be like the, you know, cold or what have you, so in the United States yesterday, there were a million cases, new cases yesterday of COVID. A million new cases yesterday in a country of 400 million. And what's the toll on the infrastructure? What's the toll on EMS and hospital workers and health departments and county commissions and other essential employees? And so I think that we haven't seen the end of this. Hopefully, it's going to burn through quick, but it still took six weeks to go through South Africa. And then now there's, you know, I don't know if it's the media is whipping it into frenzy, but Mu, I mean, you know, we're going to run out of Greek letters pretty soon, right? Is that, you know, it's now a vaccine, I mean, a virus of interest, and so they're watching it. So I'm really disappointed that the government put out such a confusing document in the middle of a tsunami. I would be content to stay the course, and we will continue to, it's almost now everything is a case by case. And, you know, we get calls from, from this coach and that teacher and this one, well, what about this? What about that? What about that? I understand that kids need to play sports. I understand that. But it's going to take everybody in the community to pull as one to see the least amount of damage from this. If you have 100,000 cases or you have a million cases, it's not going to be a happy ending for everybody. So how do we, you know, we can't just discount, well, I heard it was going to be less. Well, that's what they said about Delta. I don't know. I've never been good at reading the future. And so I just think that now is the time not to sort of shortchange the process. We've got good results with the things we've done. I would not be a big advocate to change. I know that WVU has already gone to the five days they're adopting this. There are a lot of people that are adopting this. And I can live with it if they follow all of the parts. It's not just five days and you're done. It's five days, no symptoms, wear a mask, no fever, get tested. And so how do we, at the Health Department, try to steer the community in that direction? We're challenged. And so I appreciate the opportunity to come before you today. And while it's kind of a gloomy message that, you know, we'll get through this, but we, some of the tools that we've had have been sort of removed by the feds, if you will. And so it will be a little more challenging here in the next couple of weeks. Any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Smith. And it's not, you're not boring us. This is very interesting and fascinating, or maybe I'm just a geek. But you're right, this has been such a mixed bag. And even when you talk about symptoms, you know, basically, any symptom you have now could be associated with COVID. I mean, we started out, remember in the beginning, we were talking about trying to find that little thing that would point to you might have COVID, and they were talking about COVID toes. I mean, we've gone from stuff like that to basically anything, scratchy foot, itchy ear, whatever. I mean, so there's no way of telling. And again, it just highlights the work that you and your staff have done. I think you needed, I think you need an infection scenario department, just to be able to have, where people can call and bounce these scenarios off. I can't imagine the amount of your day and the amount of your staff's day that just gets overtaken by just trying to answer basic questions in these basic scenarios that's been really exponentially confused by conflicting direction.
Yeah.
So thank you for all you've done. I told you last week, or when we talked earlier in the week, when I went and got tested earlier in the week, I got tested on Monday, and I saw your staff there, and I was thinking that, you know, the little, the little bit, the little thing that we're able to do to give them a little bonus at the end of the year is nothing compared to how much those people have been working. I mean, I've seen the same person, and again, I've basically gotten tested every week since this started, except for small breaks in between being vaccinated, and I see the same people working tirelessly. And, you know, just kudos to you and your staff. And again, it should highlight, you know, how much you guys are still on the front lines working. I don't know what your day total is, how many, since the beginning of the pandemic. Are you still?
I can't give you that number off the top of my head.
Are you in the 500s?
It's like a taxi cab meter that's running right now. It's, we're getting, you know, yesterday, I think we were close to 200 positives.
Yeah, I mean, just talking about the days that you guys have been working on this, on this pandemic.
I'm not sure I want to know that number.
At times, there seemed like there was an end in sight, but that ended, you know, that light at the tunnel ended up being a train and, you know, like Delta or Omicron or whatever. So really appreciate all you've done, and this is good information for the public. Thank you for coming down and presenting.
My pleasure.
As far as Anthony, I've known Anthony for 30 years. You're turning the finances or the overall administration of the Health Department over into great hands. So that allows you to focus on more of this clinical stuff, and I think that's a great move, and I can welcome continuing working with Anthony. So that's all I have to say to him.
Just had a quick question, and this was more for clarity. You hear a lot of scuttle that people have talked a long time about this theory of herd immunity. And if I could glean from what you just presented, based upon even folks that are vaccinated and boosted, getting this Omicron variant and even the Delta, that herd immunity is largely a myth, or it's something that's not proving to be something that's an actual, you might not get as sick, that might be part of it, but you're still going to catch the virus if you're not careful. Is that fair to say?
Right. I think that the take-home message has to be, continue to mask, continue to watch your distance, continue to, you know, limit your exposure as much as possible. We'll be studying this for the next 100 years, like we studied the last, you know, the Spanish flu that, you know, was 100 years ago. It looks like at this point in time that the virus mutates in such a direction that when it re-presents itself to the individual, having had the vaccine, having had the booster, having had COVID a couple of times, there's limited protection. And I think that the good news is, is that having some antibody in there lessens the severity of the illness. And so, you know, if you, we didn't even talk about this, but the risk factors is still going to be basically, you know, like symptoms, it's just about every medical condition. Unfortunately, in Appalachia, we have a tremendous amount of obesity and heart disease and diabetes and hypertension, all of which are hugely important risk factors. And so, you know, just about the entire state right now is in the red zone, and, you know, everybody is at increased risk because of the, their body habits, their health risk factors and stuff. So having any edge, whether it's vaccine, booster, having survived COVID, is important.
Thank you.
One more quick question. This is so off the wall, but I heard this one last week. What do you, does the Health Department have, they gotten any questions about what do people do when they have an infected individual and they have animals in the house, as far as not having those animals around the infected person versus, you know, and spreading it to the other people that are not infected in the household?
I think the jury's still out on that, and we do have the Department of Weird Questions. We do know that a lot of mammals can carry COVID, whether it's dog or cat or horse or what have you. What's unclear is how much infection crosses back and forth. And I think that we just don't know enough at that point in time.
I'm sitting here trying to figure out what we as a county commission can do. Everyone's burned out. It's been two years. In fact, I jokingly said, this community could not handle six months, and we're doing two years, and it's amazing what we're doing. And I keep thinking, what frustrates me is if there's a fire and five people die, we say, what can we do to help so it doesn't happen again? If we have 10 people in a flood, what can we mitigate to stop so we don't have this flood again? And after hearing that the possibility in the next several weeks of 20 to 30% of absenteeism will affect everyone, I'm coming up with, you know, we're very proactive, the county commission. And I want to throw out an idea that, and I want to challenge the citizens of Montague County, that to the end of this month, we wear masks inside buildings. You just wear, because you have the flu.
Yep.
You have, we know it's going to come to it. The second thing is we challenge to go up 10% on getting vaccinated and boosters.
Yep.
And at the end of January, we can show what we've done, and that's what I'd like to do, as it's personal, because I know I'm very passionate about this, but we have to do something, and I'm very concerned if we sit back and do nothing, and this is a way of doing it. The second thing I'm going to ask you to do is, this is what, I could probably get a call every day about this. If we could make this available, and I know you do, whether it's the newspaper, whether the church bulletins, so it gets to the people, what happens is it's out there. We need to get that to the people. I know we put this on our website. So again, this is something I'd like to challenge the citizens. I think we as a commission have always been proactive, and we want to move forward. Let's see what we can do together, because between this and the flu, it's going to get bad. Why can't we at least try and be proactive before it?
No, I appreciate the recommendations, and I think that's a great place to start.
And it's indoor, so that way it isn't mandating businesses, it's putting it on the onus of the citizens.
Yep.
And Mon County is exceptional. Our citizens are above the others, and we're going to prove it. So hopefully, we can do that.
Thank you.
Hopefully.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there any other elected officials that would like to come before us? We will clean the mic. No. Anyone else?
Eleven and a dream.
Yeah. Anyone else? Okay, no. Okay, at this time, we'll have reports from county commissioners. I'll go to my left first.
Just have a few things that are a little different tone. This marks the one-year anniversary of my first meeting, maybe not to the exact date, but the first meeting of the year. And I'll have to admit, when I was elected to this position, I think it's safe to say I had no idea what I was getting into. The county commission covers a great number of areas that I had no idea about, in addition to working with, you know, seems like monthly with MUB and DOH and Charleston and the other elected officials. It encompasses a much greater scale than I ever imagined, and it's very exciting, and I feel like we're doing good work. Out of that work, however, I picked out a few things, kind of a little brevity to the meeting, that I never thought I would come in contact with or have any association with as a county commissioner. Those being outhouses, sanitary product dispensers, stair treads, hypodermic needles and Narcan, mench on the bench, various problems with dogs doing their business on county property that we've had to address. Along that line, septic overflow systems at our parks, fairy stones, never heard of fairy stones before, sledding hill and bumpers. And to paraphrase my favorite quote of the year, and I've changed it a little bit, Commissioner Bloom's coinage of this phrase is, "No offense, but you're terrible." But, so those are the few things that just kind of popped up into my head over the year, and I kept track of it. But I appreciate everyone's help, and I appreciate Sean and Tom and Colleen and Renata bringing me along and teaching me the ropes, and hopefully, we have a really productive year.
Thank you. It's been a light schedule due to the holidays, but since the last meeting, yesterday, I had my monthly breakfast with Delegate Statler and Board of Education member Ron Lidle. We also, Scott Rochak of the State Department of Education joined us to talk to Joe about some initiatives going into the session. After that, I took Delegate Statler over to meet with Forrest Wyans to give him a briefing of EMS, as Joe goes to Charleston, and, you know, he serves on that Fire and EMS Committee as the chair, so giving him some vital information as far as the state of EMS services here in Mon County and across the state. We're very lucky to have our EMS director, Forrest Wyans. He's very knowledgeable, and he's very tied in to the, these EMS entities all across the state and all across the country. So he has a wealth of information, and Joe even asked him if he would consider if he needed to testify in Charleston, just because of his knowledge base. Today's the Green County call this morning. I was doing some meeting prep, so I didn't participate, but Commissioner Bloom and Arnett did, is our monthly call with Green County. This afternoon, time permitting, or commission business permitting, I'll be meeting with the Airport Commerce Park Funding Working Group. And, but that's, probably will miss that one if our commission business takes precedent. Tomorrow, we have the MMPO, that Long Range Transportation Plan Meeting. I believe it's on all of our schedules, that Director Austin asked us to participate in. In the evening, I have a Mason Dixon Historical Park Advisory Board Meeting. Friday, we have staff reports, and then I have a tag-up call with our broadband consultants. Monday, I have an executive, Development Authority Executive Committee Meeting, and then Tuesday, I have a Juma Meeting. Really want to thank Dr. Smith for coming today. I had a conversation with him yesterday, and I was so riveted by it, I said, hey, why don't you, would you please come down and give a briefing? And his briefings always do take up a little bit of time in our meeting, but I think it's well worth it for the public to hear directly from Dr. Smith, and it kind of allows him to get a message out to a lot of people instead of having to keep repeating the same conversation to every group he meets with. I am looking forward to bigger and better things to come in the new year. I want to echo some of the things that Commissioner Arnett said. One of the things that he's asked a long time, or many times, as we've been going through this process this past year, he's like, is it always like this, or is this just because of ARP dollars? And I've said, well, it's kind of always like this. But to that end, because of my requirement to track my hours on, at my other job meticulously, I do track my hours as far as what I do spending, what I do for the, when I'm working for the commission. And I broke those down into a couple of categories, and overall, total overall engagements compared against last year is actually down 59 hours. So the work of the president really doesn't change. Our work is all pretty much even regardless of whether you're a president or not. Outside prep work was actually up 18 hours. Work on Board of Authorities was up 52 hours. Special projects was actually down an hour and a half. And procurement, the procurement activities I do, actually, I just started tracking that this year, took up about 5% of my time. So overall, official engagements is about 47% of our time as commissioners. Outside prep work is about 10, 20%. Boards and authorities is about 14%. Special projects, about 14%. And then the procurement time that I mentioned is about 5% of my time. So it really, being a commissioner, isn't just this one meeting and it's all over with. It really is more than a part-time job, and it does take total engagement. So to that end, the public should know that, you know, this commission is very functional and is working hard constantly on these issues. Just, we're not here just the time that you see us here, that we're working these issues all through the week. So do look forward to bigger and better things as we move forward in the new year and under your leadership, President Bloom.
Thank you. I have just several quick. I do want to thank Green County, and I think it needs to be known, Green County was the only county we had requested for support of a grant that we're writing for the BMX bike program, and they came through, and we're very pleased that they did that, and we also are appreciative, because it's across state lines, and we've come up with some ideas that we were planning on doing the year. The second thing is, we had the report of our goals and accomplishments, I like to call it, and I want to make it very clear, and I know I can speak on behalf of all three county commissioners. county commissioners, that if it wasn't for the staff and the county employees, we wouldn't be able to do these. And I want it real clear that, sometimes we think, well, the only way we reward them is by trying to give them an increase in salary, but we continually make sure that they are known that we appreciate what they do, and I wanted to make that very clear, because this report should also be, also stating that it's because of what they do. And finally, I look forward to being president, as Sean said, it's just more of a ceremonial, but the thing is, the three of us work real well together. We work as a team. We're going to be very proactive this year, and I think we have some real exciting businesses, factories coming online, and some programs that we'll be announcing during the year. So with that, I ask for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn. Second?
About to move to second, we'll be gone. Thank you for staying.